I'd like to call the open session of the Tuesday, September 27th, 2016, to order. And we are reconvening, and the first thing we will do is a pledge of allegiance. And Sunny Zia, would you please lead us?
Please raise your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, now, we'll take the roll call.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
Okay, and then I have a report on closed session items. And there's nothing to report.
No action.
Okay, no action. Okay. And then approval of the minutes of September 13th.
So moved.
Okay. Trustee Zia, was that you making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Zia and seconded by trustee Otto.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 2.6, introduction, special announcements. President, Superintendent President Oakley.
Yes, thank you, Board President Baxter. We do have one special announcement today. We have an individual who is retiring that we'd like to recognize. This individual has served us for over 16 years, and it's Cheryl Glover. Cheryl's been the curriculum schedule technician for many, many years, since 2002. Before that, secretary, accounting assistant clerk. So, served Long Beach City College very well, and has been integral to the development of our class schedule, of our, of our class scheduling system. So I want to take a moment to recognize Cheryl, and ask her to come on up and receive this certificate on behalf of the Board of Trustees.
I don't know what we're going to do without you scheduling the rooms. You've always been so wonderful, so thank you very much. Now, 2.7, reordering of the agenda. Are there any comments? Okay. 2.8, ASB president report.
No comments on agenda items.
No comments.
Don't give anybody any ideas.
Dr. Peterson. It's been a really hot day. I just wanted to inform you guys, my report today is going to be a little bit brief. At PCC, we had Hispanic Heritage Month, an event within the last week. Passed out free tacos, it was really successful. I personally couldn't attend, but I heard a lot of great things about it. Also, now we fully have a full cabinet. We appointed a new rep of athletics, as well as filled in the treasurer position. So, we will do extended parliamentary procedure training with Lorenzo. I don't know his last name. But that's this upcoming week. Also, we will be having a luncheon with the Viking newspaper, possibly starting an article on it where we can have ASB featured on it biweekly. So, that should be fun. And then also, we'll be working really close with Alicia Krizinga to promote ASB voting, and just voting all around for the upcoming election on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comments on agenda items. Are there no comments? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, now we're going on to 3.1, presentations, introduction of the 2016 LEED Academy.
Thank you very much, President Baxter. As you can tell by all the black shirts in the audience, we have a couple LEED Academies here. We're now into our second cohort. But as you also know, my colleague in the coordination of this program is Karen Kane. And for the introduction of the current 2016 class, I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
Thank you, Vice President Delgado. If you are a member of the LEED Cohort 2, will you please stand? This is LEED 2016. And trustees, you'll see, yes, and everyone has a nice picture of each one of them. I want to start by thanking Superintendent President Oakley, trustee Otto, and the rest of the trustees for your support of this wonderful program. You can see by the many beautiful faces and people standing that we are a very diverse cohort. We have 18 or 19 women and 10 men. They range from people who have been at the college for two years, to those who have been here for more than 30, and it's getting close to 40 years, for... And still going strong. So, they're, they represent all areas of the college, and they are very intelligent, caring, thoughtful, curious, and very student-centered. And already, this group has made quite an impact at the college after hearing a couple of presentations from folks. They have gone out and started changing the way they do business in their areas. And not that they weren't student-centered before, but have bigger understanding of student success, and what student-centered means. And no matter what area they come from at the college, they are all contributing to our student success efforts. So we're really proud of them. We look forward to working with them this semester. The college supports this program in an unbelievable way, in that more than 100 folks will come in and out of their sessions to teach them their areas of the college. That includes vice presidents and folks from each of their areas. Everyone takes great pride in coming in and working with the LEED Academy. We've already been to UCLA for a weekend. They've been treated to a wonderful evening at trustee Otto's home. And now, they have been on campus and starting to learn all the areas of the college, and how what they do relates, and how it integrates with our new strategic plan. So, I couldn't be more proud of a group of folks, and looking forward to working with all of you this semester, along with Vice President Delgado. So, thank you for your participation in this program.
Thank you very much.
So, Board President Baxter, there's one more element that we want to take the time. Each cohort, as a part of this program, must engage in a group project. And so, tonight, we are bringing you cohort ones, group project presenters, so that you can hear from the cohorts what their project was, and where they've taken it thus far. And so, we're going to start with cohort one, which is the Victoria's Vikings. And if you're, the presenters wouldn't mind perhaps lining up. We've got the Victoria's Vikings, and behind them will be Team Erickson, then Circle of Friends, Trailblazers, and Full Spectrum. So, we'll start with Jonathan Tahada, who is our IITS Help Desk Support Specialist. Jonathan?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd just like to introduce the rest of the Victoria's Vikings, if I could. First, we have Deena Humble, who's the Dean of Social Sciences and Arts, right behind me. C.C. Sadler, who's the Educational Technologist within IITS. Cheryl Williams, who is the Operations Manager within Facilities. And Claudia Nguyen, who is an instructor that works within Student Success. It has been the ultimate goal of our cohort, to bring together different constituencies here at Long Beach City College, with a focus on culture, community, and connection. Our cohort worked with the Strategic Plan Oversight Task Force in the development of the College Day Program and the Strategic Plan Kickoff. We encapsulated the spirit of the Strategic Plan values into a spoken-word performance. The performance was participatory, collaborative, and inspiring. We have been meeting with our mentor, Dr. Terry Long, and would like to thank her for enthusiastically supporting our group's goals. We will be completing our project by transforming the spoken-word performance into a digital media piece, which will be featured here at the college and on the Strategic Plan website. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Victoria's Vikings. And now, from cohort two, which is Team Erickson, and leading the presentation is John Pope, our Director of Public Affairs and Governmental Relations. John?
Good evening. So, we are Team Erickson, named after, of course, the Viking explorer, Leif Erikson. We thought that was apropos. So, I'd like to introduce Brett Gilmore of Academic Services, Michelle Pope of Student Services, and faculty members Ryan Schwartzrock and Bea Ford. Everyone? We also had Paula Fisher, who, as many of you know, retired. So she is no longer working with us on this project, but has contributed greatly up until this point. So, for our team, we wanted to do something that would really continue the spirit of the LEED Academy, in a way that could sort of become part of the institution moving forward, and was not a niche that was already occupied. And so, what we came upon was a volunteer association, that has its roots kind of in the corporate model. And we envisioned getting people together for anything from beach cleanups, to feeding the homeless, you name it, anything that kind of is along that community-based spectrum. We wanted to make it outwardly facing, so we would be visible out in the community and show that, you know, LBCC doesn't just do good things here on campus, we do a lot out in the community as well. And so after a few strategy sessions, we realized that this was a very daunting undertaking. And, you know, there are some corporations that have whole divisions devoted to this. So this, our original ambitions, we scaled back a little bit, but it actually led us to explore some partnerships. And so there are agencies out there, and nonprofit organizations, that actually exist to pair volunteers with the need. Janice is shaking her head, she may know about the Volunteer Center, and some others like that. So, this led us to engage with some of these groups, to explore a potential partnership. So we've been sort of moving down that road, and when the time is right, we want to bring forward a proposal for a partnership to the college, and have it vetted through the right channels. But what we're looking for is a reputable partner, who could then align us with these opportunities. So, our job would really just be to gather up all the willing and able volunteers from throughout the campus community, to then be paired with the right kind of volunteer opportunity. And we're not so much involved in the administration and the overhead of that event, really just kind of being excited to be there. So that's kind of where we're at, and we're looking to kind of finalize this partnership proposal toward the end of this year, early '17, and again, bring something forward that will be really sustainable, and can become part of the fabric of the college moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Next, from cohort three, presenting is Jennifer Holmgren, our Planning Systems Analyst in Institutional Effectiveness. Jennifer?
Good afternoon. Our cohort is called Circle of Friends, and I'd like to introduce each of our members. I'm Jennifer Holmgren. This is Konrad O'Durand. Ariane Lee. Margaret Antonio Palomera. Ted Hyatt. And Adrian Novotny. So, we started thinking about our project back in October, actually, and we had a bunch of different ideas that we wanted to do. And we ended up settling on one idea that we thought was very important to the college, and that was assisting the Strategic Plan Oversight Task Force in conducting their environmental scan. And we thought this was really important research, and we wanted to be a part of, you know, contributing to the strategic plan in a very meaningful way. So, in early January, we met with Dr. Eva Bagh, who is one of the co-chairs of the Strategic Plan Oversight Task Force. And we asked her, you know, how can we contribute in this way? And we really went through all the different ways, or all the different topics of research that we could examine for the strategic plan, and settled on ones that really meant something to us. And so, for me, as a researcher in the Department of Institutional Effectiveness, I looked at LBCC demographics, and local and state demographics as well. And I wanted each of my cohort members to mention what they settled on as well.
Ariane Lee. Technology, pedagogical technology trends.
Margaret Antonio Palomares. I did the public policy.
Konrad O'Durand. And I was responsible for researching social trends.
I researched pedagogy, especially in the areas of, you know, methodology of higher educational teaching, and watched it change for 30-some years, from the lecture format to a variety of delivery systems, that also involves the incorporation of a lot of technology. So, I think this is a very important topic for all of us to have a look at. Thank you.
Good evening, Ted Hyatt. I researched economic and workforce trends, and specifically entrepreneurship as a career path for our students, regardless of their major, basically creating their own job, essentially, and jobs for others as well.
So, once we decided on our topics, we met with our VP mentor, Amory Gable, and she provided a lot of insight on our different topics, and also gave a lot of insight on, you know, the timeline of our project, and how we could get this accomplished in a short amount of time. Because with the strategic plan really rolling out and being finalized in early spring, we needed to get this done quickly. So we wanted to thank her for her contributions, and her willingness to meet with our group. And then in mid-February, we met one more time with Dr. Eva Bagh and Karen Kane, the Academic Senate President, just to make sure we were really providing research that would be meaningful. So we brought what we had done so far, and they provided some insight as well, and guidance along the way. And on March 14th, we finally presented our findings to the Strategic Plan Oversight Task Force, and gave them our reports, and they incorporated our information into the final version of the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, and next cohort four, who are the Trailblazers. And the presenter will be Mona Hassan, who's our Director of Human Resources. And just to give you a perspective on the group project, it's focused on a management orientation program. So Mona?
Thank you, Vice President Delgado, and thank you, Board, for having us tonight. And our team, as Rose indicated, is the Trailblazers. And we're mentored by Luanne Bynum. Thank you, Luanne, for your feedback, it's been very helpful. I'm going to quickly introduce our team. First of all, Angela Head, who is unable to join us this evening, and she showed up. There she is, she flew in. And then our honorary photographer, David Goto, over here. And then we have Erin Murphy. And then we have Anne Ingle. And Elijah Sim. And then we have, no, Sean Dominguez. I always get your names confused, Sean Dominguez. And then Angela Head, who came in right now. Thank you, Angela. And so, our focus is on management orientation, on building that capacity, and providing a solid foundation, a solid induction to the college. We believe that a solid induction gives an opportunity for effectiveness in our leadership, and building capacity throughout the college. And this was assessed through a survey that we sent out to the management team, on what are the needs, and what did they see as new people coming on board? And if they had to do it all over again, what are the things that they would have wanted to know? So we feel it adds some value. It's definitely aligned with our strategic plan, and Goal Number Four, which is investing in our people, which includes the onboarding process, and also in building that community that we need with Goal Number Three. And so we do, we invested a lot of time, we're still in the process of developing the program. We have all the information that we need, based on the feedback. And we did identify the areas that, there are seven areas that we want to focus in on. And it will be completed in a one-full-day orientation, to cover the areas of planning, and really getting to know the goals and objectives of the strategic plan, program review, annual department plans, how do we do that? The purchasing process, HR, a lot of HR, knowing the contract, knowing due process, evaluation, all those things that are very important to actually building relationships as well. If we do that right, then we build that trust and capacity. Project management, facilities, security, safety. And then we also had more on, sorry. I think those are the five key areas, but a well-rounded program that would go into, including a coach, a mentor, and establishing a mentorship program, a training program to have somebody to bounce those ideas off of. So as you're going through something maybe very difficult, or planning something, that you have somebody that you can go to. And so we're excited about the rollout of the program, and some of the resources, you know, we're looking at funding options so that we can move forward and continue this program in the years to come, because we believe that it adds a lot of value to the organization. So thank you again for having us tonight.
Thank you, Mona.
Okay, last but not least, is Full Spectrum. And presenting for Full Spectrum is Husam Keshew. He is our Director of Instructional Technology and Distance Learning. And so, Husam, it's all yours.
Thank you. First, I would like to begin by introducing our team. First, there's Lisa Edmonds, who's not able to attend here today. Mary Haggerty. Susan Trask. Sonia Verdisco. And Colin Williams. So our, so as you know, as everyone involved with the LEED Academy would tell you, it is a wonderful experience that is greatly enriching to us as individuals, as a community. Therefore, in continuing the synergy of the LEED Academy, our cohort developed the LEED Network, an alumni association that serves as an extension to the LEED Academy, which assists in sustaining and enriching the leadership and growth of the LEED alumni, future LEED Academies, and the LBCC community. It provides a forum for maintaining partnerships, collaboration, and ongoing connections and communication between LEED alumni. And the network acts as a central coordinating body to assist alumni, assess the alumni in implementing annual goals and initiatives, designed to promote campus culture of collegiality, engagement, and success. So in doing this, our network will have monthly board meetings, there's a lectured board. We will have bimonthly social events and networking activities for alumni. We will have quarterly planning meetings, where we can engage with one another on different initiatives that we have, and we need volunteers and support with. And as well as not just, it's not just focused for the LEED Academy, it's also for the LBCC at large. Therefore, we are doing events for the community at LBCC, so we'll hold various events for the community, to expand the scope of the LEED Network, to include to us of LBCC. So since we've initiated, we've actually done some of those things. In February, we actually, there's a book called Res designing Community Colleges. This book was, there was a summit in Bakersfield College. Therefore, our network, we actually hosted a live stream here in T1200, where we invited the entire LBCC community to actually attend the conference virtually from campus. We also held two open LEED Academy sessions, teaching people about the LEED Academy, and recruiting and promoting it, and asking, and opening Q and A to support any questions or questions people had in enrolling for LEED Academy. And lastly, we've already held an annual alumni reunion in April, where all the LEED members met with each other. We had dinner together, and we actually, we talked about where we are with our projects, and any support that we needed from each one another. And last thing, we are currently working on our annual LEED reception. This is intended to be a way for the old LEED, the previous LEED Academy, to meet the new LEED Academy sometime in fall. So that's something that we want to implement annually, as well as an annual LEED banquet that would happen at the end of the spring, where we can discuss our achievements and goals, the projects that we have done, and also the achievements of the members of LEED Academy, as they're growing in their careers and in their personal lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Full Spectrum. I do want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and there's no question that the reach of LEED Academy goes further than just the group projects. And I want to give you just a short perspective of other projects that have been spearheaded as a result of individuals coming together through this program. So, for example, Mary Haggerty, who was in cohort one, and is our athletic coordinator, is currently writing a book on student success. The book is called Life During College for Athletes. It includes skills for success focused on growth mindset, resilience, teamwork, commitment, character, and other life skills that contribute to the success of their sport and life. Certainly, we can probably translate that to other departments as well. Also, three LEED participants, C.C. Sadler, Annie Ingle, and Angela Folks, who are classified support staff members, are actively pursuing the implementation of a classified Senate, which will further support our classified support staff members' engagement in the planning and decision-making process. Husam Keshew, who you just heard, just completed his PhD in Educational Policy and Leadership with a specialization in educational technology and educational psychology. I'm sure there's a lot of application for that, Husam. And Sonia Verdisco, who's in the audience, Sonia, raise your hand, who is an enrollment specialist, just completed her master's degree in counseling. We expect that at some point down the line, we'll see her as a full-time counselor. And Colin Williams, a librarian, Colin, raise your hand, has just entered an EDD program at UCLA in Educational Leadership. And John Pope, as many of you know, has also enrolled in the Community College Leadership Program in pursuit of his EDD in Educational Leadership. And so those are just a few of the things that are happening among this group of participants. And I can't tell you just how dynamic they are, and how engaged they are together, as a community of individuals working on the same common goal. Karen and I are just inspired every day, working and being around them. And so you make our jobs just a delight to be with you, and so we thank you for that. And go Vikings!
As I was listening, two things came to mind. Number one is, especially the new group, should be thinking about applying for a foundation grant to get money to do the things you're going to do next year. So keep that in mind, and maybe in cohort two, the second year or the first year, think about applying for grants, because they come out, I think the applications come out around March. So that's number one. And number two, the other thing I thought about, is how easy this could be to fold into our accreditation, which is down the line. But I'm thinking about all these wonderful things that we're doing, and I'm sure that you're keeping track of all this, because it's going to make the accreditation self-study a lot. I don't want to say easier, because it's a terrific undertaking, but certainly will add to that self-study.
Absolutely, President Baxter. One of the things we have done is set up a website for the LEED Academy, so that's going to be an easy piece of resource to go to for the accreditation. The other thing I want to say, it'd be remiss if I didn't thank the vice presidents. They have participated as mentors to each of the cohorts, and so through their guidance, they're able to accomplish what they're accomplishing, and so I thank you. And so I know that the LEED team does as well. So thank you for all of your efforts on behalf of everything they're doing.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Trustee Zia?
Thank you, President Baxter. I too want to congratulate you. This is fantastic. On a side note, it's really nice to see you, Adrian, come back and be back in the building, around us on campus. Yeah, that deserves an applause. I also want to congratulate you, the 2016 participants. I know some of you, I'm really glad Imad is here. For those of you who don't know, Imad has been someone who's really inspired me personally. I've listened to him speak about his journey to the United States, it's really moving, and I hope you get to know him, and really hear about his journey, and the way he inspires others. So it's a pleasure having you here in this cohort. I also see Angela Folks, and she's been really helpful, such a wonderful, wonderful asset to both President Baxter and I on our homeless task force for our students, who are facing housing instability. It's been fantastic. It's because of your work, and you, your frontline support for those students. So I'm glad to see you in this cohort. Lisa Orr, I see Fred in the audience.
Me, trustee Zia, are you going to call on everyone in the audience?
No, but I just want to...
Okay.
Because that... I know. I understand that, er, trustee Kellogg, and in turn, President Baxter. I'm going to be respectful. I'm going to be respectful. I'm not going to call everybody out, but some folks. So, I just want to really thank you for participating, for applying, for wanting to contribute to the college district. It's very important that you continue your work.